It is April 11th, 7:30 PM, the mayor and council meeting. Linda, will you please read the Open Public Meetings Act and call the meeting to order?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the April 2nd, 2024 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website. Councilwoman DeLuiseo.
Here.
Councilwoman Homan.
Here.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Yakarino.
Here.
Mayor Wazinski.
Here. Everybody stands. Allocah. All right, next we have agenda review. We have our second reading of our ordinance to tweak the, the, where is it, outdoor cafe code. We also have an introduction to an ordinance to establish an increase of the cap. We do this every year to 3.5. And on our consent agenda, consent agenda are matters that are considered routine, but I'd like to go through a couple of them. So everybody knows all the great work that we're doing. So we have an emergency temporary budget appropriation, which we also do every year. We have a change order. We're still in the process of our ADA bathrooms at the firehouse. We have a change order and so hopefully that'll get finished soon. We also have a small change order for the borough kitchen renovation. We have authorization for a new John Deere Gator. And there is a little clause in here that says I have to be, I'm allowed to be the first person to drive it when we get it. We also have a resolution for Burgess Associates. This is part of our bigger plan to get ahead of what is going on in the new fair share housing world. That I'll share a little bit more in my mayor's report. But we're going to be embarking on a hazard vulnerability study to really take a look at our land use plan and our master plan. We have the bill list that I reviewed and Councilwoman Lovasolo, did you review?
I sure did. Thank you very much.
And we're also awarding the borough, we're authorizing the borough to directly lease and go to bid with outside telecom companies. We have an existing list with Crown Castle that expires on the 31st. So now we have the opportunity to potentially go out to multiple carriers. And this could be a very nice revenue stream for the borough. So we're really happy about that. And let's see, what else? What else? Shared service agreement for trees and authorize them to enter a grant agreement for the firehouse contract. So that is actually another grant that we went for for the firehouse bathroom that I mentioned earlier. And then under new business, we have the introduction to our municipal budget. So I'd like to open the meeting to the public for any questions on any agenda items.
Walter Wood with 38 Hamilton. I got a question regarding Resolution 24-115. Where's the kitchen?
Oh, the kitchen is actually right through the quilt room. So it's like the third door on your right. You can go actually have a view of it. It's a kitchen for the community as well as for the staff. We've had it here since the building was initially built and it's just, it was very tired and falling apart. So we just spruced it up.
And it's available for our use?
So it's, currently, this is the only space that our, that our community and a lot of our volunteer groups can use. And the kitchen was, you know, part of that. We actually are going to have our new community center now. So most of the groups are actually going to be going over there. There will be some groups here, which of course they will be allowed to use it. But for the most part, it's, it's going to be, you know, for the staff and for whatever groups that are here to use, as well as the library. It's not just like open for anybody off the streets to kind of come in, but it is open to the community and the girls.
Yeah.
At the place to lay out.
I don't, yeah. There's no, there's no oven in it, but there is a microwave.
I had one by team. Where's this tower?
Oh, the cell tower? It's by Crestwood. It's in like Crestwood. If you are driving in, you kind of look up, it's right there. Big cell tower. It's got some trees kind of on it looking, they're supposed to look like trees.
Tower right now, a recycle.
It is. That's it. That's it. Yep. We're just taking ownership of it.
Well, it doesn't, we don't own it right now?
So we own the land that it's on, but the, the actual tower was leased out by another company and that lease has expired. So now we are taking over the, the ownership of the leases.
Oh, I'm just curious about the, when, when, when the fire house has their yearly contribution from us?
From the residents?
Yeah. What do they use the money for?
So the donations go into a fund. They use it for some extra equipment that they may need, some extra clothing, some safety apparatus. They save up to help pay for, you know, you know, equipment or, or trucks.
When they do work in renovating the firehouse, is that money used for that purpose or is that the town paying for?
So, you know, I think it depends. So it's, it could be partially potentially paid for that. I think they try to use donations mostly for safety equipment. As the borough, we do like to support the firehouse. So we, like we're, the renovation, for example, right now, the bathrooms, it's being paid for by the borough as well as a grant. So we try to go out for grants on behalf of the firehouse as much as we can. Thanks Walter. Great questions, by the way. All right. Next we have second reading of Ordinance 24-04. This first reading was read by title on March 21st. And this is second reading and public hearing. Linda, will you please read Ordinance 24-04?
The following ordinance published here with was first read by title on March 21st, 2024 and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. Ordinance 24-04. In ordinance to amend Chapter 185 Outdoor Cafes, Chapter 185-1 entitled Purpose and Chapter 185-16 entitled Months of Operation of the Code of the Borough of Allendale.
Do I have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on Ordinance 24-04? Not seeing anybody? We have introduct, did you want to come? Sorry.
You don't have to.
Come on up. You have to do it again, just for the record. That's just some formality.
Name and address, sir.
Recently I went down below in the hall trying to find these resolutions. I don't think I'm an idiot. I typically find them. Where, where, where are they listed?
Walter, I, I, that's what I just, I made you a packet of all the resolutions, but you can also find them on the borough website.
On the website?
Yes.
I'm not illustrated downstairs?
No.
If there's any resolution Walter that you would like to see and you'd like us to, you know, either make you a copy if there's something specific, we're happy, we're happy to accommodate that.
Of all the resolutions.
I'm just learning.
That's okay. Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Very nice. Yeah. Okay, next we have ordinance. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Second, please, on Ordinance 24-04.
Homan.
Alrighty.
Councilman DeLuiseo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
Okay, next we have introduction of Ordinance 24-05. This is to allow us to exceed the 2% cap to 3.5%. Do I have a motion to approve Ordinance 24-05?
So move Lovasolo.
Second, please.
Homan. Councilman DeLuiseo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino. And I just have to read the title. I'm sorry. It's Ordinance 24-05. Calendar year 2024, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limit and to establish a cap bank, New Jersey NJSA 40A colon four dash 45 point 14.
Just for the record, the second reading will be made up.
At 7:30 PM, right here. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move. Second, O'Connell.
Councilman DeLuiseo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Stay 24-118. Yes on the bounce.
Excellent. Thank you. Next is council reports. Councilman Yakarino, your council report, please.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So earlier this evening, myself, Mayor and Andy met with Lake Director Tom Biscardi. As we're preparing for the lake season and the Crestwood season as a whole. We discussed a variety of topics, including the upcoming county inspection, docks that are going to be placed within the lake, the frag mighty treatment plan that we have ongoing, as well as just usual, get ready and prep for the lake. We are also moving ahead with our concession stand project. This Wednesday, we're going to have a courtesy review of the land use board. So we're really excited to get bid specs within the next month, ultimately go out to bid and have, you know, our plan ready to open up in spring of 2025. Also, within the committee, we follow up with members of the ASA board regarding our fields and we are getting ready for our big opening day next Saturday, April 20. I did speak with Allison today. As we touched upon briefly already, the kitchen is ready for launch. And it really does look quite amazing. It's really an awesome improvement from what we had prior. And I know that Allison put a lot of time and effort into it. And it's also nice to have for all members of our community organizations that use the space as well as the library and the borough staff. So we're really excited to have that. It's a phenomenal addition for the facility. Also, we're speaking with Allison today. Amanda and John were a big help with her moving furniture and also building the furniture. Allison was very thankful and wanted me to note that to the rest of the council as well. Other than that, I'll close my report for this evening. Keep it short.
Alrighty, busy time in facilities, parks and racks. Councilman O'Connell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make it quick. I had the pleasure of attending AVAX fundraiser casino night. It looked like they were doing very well. They had to set up some more tables, so that was good news. I hope they did well. And with the scouts, we have Cyan. She is going to be doing garbage cans that are recyclable spit into to dress up Crestwood Lake. She's still getting approval from her scoutmaster and Dean will be doing a new fire pit behind the red barn. With possibly a bench and some gravel around the pit so it doesn't look worn or things like that. And he's still waiting for his scoutmaster.
Right, yes.
Keep you up to date with him.
That area is going to have a nice improvement because we actually have gutters now right on the red barn. So we'll have that runoff where we're getting gutters anyway.
I'm hoping if it's all right with you, once they get approval from their scoutmasters, have them come in and explain.
Oh, of course. We love, we love them to scouts to come. That'll be wonderful. Thank you very much. So council.
It's having all the fun on the phone.
I know. Fun time.
Take it on the phone. Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Ah, thank you, Mayor. So I'll start with finance committee. As you can see later tonight on our agenda, we are pleased to introduce our 2024 municipal budget this evening for adoption in May. While things are not 100% solid yet, we are anticipating a modest 1% increase. Allison Altano, our CFO, is unable to be at tonight's meeting, but she did a great job with this year's budget after being in her role for only really just slightly over a year. So she was able to anticipate enough increases than last year's budget that we didn't get slammed this year. Our largest budgets increases this year are pension and health benefits. Police salaries and wages are usually a major part of our increases. But due to retirements, that number is actually lower than it typically is. Our revenues are essentially around the same as prior years. And I just want to thank Allison and our finance department, as well as our department heads for all of the work that goes into ensuring that we stay true to our pledge of fiscal responsibility, while also continuing to modernize our systems and maintaining the integrity, the infrastructure and the beauty of our borough. Land use committee. Land use committee met on March 27th. There is always a lot to discuss at these meetings. So I want to thank my committee of Anthony Hackett, Mike Freeland, Andy Agugliero, Joe DeLuiseo and Mayor Wazinski. It really is a team effort to address residents' property concerns and challenges, and I appreciate everyone's diligence. As Mayor and I have mentioned in our previous reports, we've had an incredibly rainy stretch, evidence again tonight, from last year to the first quarter of this year. And flooding is still a major issue in our borough. We continue to address this topic across all of our committees on this council and encourage our residents to continue to reach out to us. We also continue to look at cleaning up and clarifying our code and we'll be starting to look at our master plan. And affordable housing mandates in the state of New Jersey will also continue to impact all aspects of our town. Town hall. So we had our ladies committee meeting on March 27th and then that evening, we had a great town hall meeting here in Borough Hall. The mayor presented her overview of the goals and strategy for this year and beyond. It gave all of us an opportunity to explain our committees and then meet with residents afterwards, one-on-one to chat and answer questions pertinent to our committees. It was a really wonderful turnout and event and thank you to everyone who attended and thank you, Mayor, for organizing. A few other things. April 27th will be a busy day in Allendale as we have our third annual spring cleaning day. The green team is busy planning a day of recycling, shredding and donating. So check our borough website for details. That day is also history day. So the John Fell House in conjunction with other local historical homes and museums will be open for tours. This week, the week of April 8th is National Library Week. So I want to thank our staff, board of volunteers at Lee Memorial Library for all that they do to keep the library, the wonderful resource natural beauty that it is to Allendale. Some upcoming events at the library of interest for the kids. Tomorrow is Silent Book Club. On April 22nd is Earth Day featuring the Lorax, a reading of the Lorax. And on the 23rd, another session of their popular slime time. For us adults, April brings part two of a memoir writing class on April 15th. And this one sounds like a great one. On April 23rd, spend less time cleaning and more time reading. This program features a professional organizer who will share tips on effective cleaning techniques and products.
What date is that?
That is April 23rd. And that is my report for tonight. Thank you.
Councilwoman Homan.
All right. For once, you're not going to hear me talking a lot.
But that's good.
Because really we, our meetings continue with Veolia. You know, we're in discussions to possibly try to free up some open space to settle our green acres challenges that we have to resolve before we can really close up the easements and other things. That summarize, you think, Ray? And then in the sewers, we're having a lot of meetings around sewers as a team. And we're just trying to ensure that we develop a good strategy to work with our neighboring towns as far as developments that they are embarking upon. And how Allendale, since we are a receiver of sewage from some other towns, how we can best ensure that that does not negatively impact Allendale. And then I'll just second to them that the town hall meeting was a great idea. And I think those, you know, both for ourselves as council people, it was awesome to be able to have that opportunity. And, you know, I think there we shared our goals. So don't need to go through that again. So thank you so much. I mean, that was awesome.
Council President O'Toole.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Safety Committee sat down with Fire Chief Baez and Assistant Chief Anderson to discuss ways that the borough can assist the fire department to attract and retain new members. As we're all acutely aware, volunteerism, volunteerism is down across the board. It's not just here. It's a problem that many municipalities are facing and looking for solutions to. So we discussed some programs which the fire department is exploring to make residents interested in becoming part of the team. For instance, a FEMA training in New Mexico, which is 100% free to anyone who wants to participate. Some training at Crestwood Lake, which some residents may want to watch and some simpler things like having an open house or touch a truck events. We're going to be meeting with Chief Botaro of the ambulance corps next month to have a similar type of conversation. A few of us were happy to join the fire department for their annual installation dinner last week. It was a very nice time. It was a good event, fun for the members. And one of the bonuses is that if you go, you may never know if you're going to be serenaded by a council member singing one of your favorite yacht rock hits from the seventies.
I was glad I gave you and I was sad to miss that.
So glad there's video proof.
Yes.
You may be able to witness again at Crestwood this summer.
Ah, let's do it. Why can't we all be a better backup?
Thank you to the FBI Office of Partner Engagement and Agent Tim LaTurner, who's an Allendale resident for presenting the Run Hide Fight Program at Borough Hall on March 26th. Program was extremely well received by residents. I attended. It was a great program. And if Agent LaTurner offers it again, I highly recommend it. And finally, on Good Friday, the police department assisted local religious leaders and attendees at the annual Good Friday walk. So I've got.
Thank you very much. Councilman DeLuiseo.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, I was traveling the last several weeks. I really don't have a report. We haven't had a meeting with the DPW. But general conversations. I know the DPW is hard at work trying to get the fields up and ready for baseball season. I know they're working on cleaning up Crestwood. They've been around town picking up tree branches and trying to clean up with these freak rainstorms we've been having. So I know they're trying to keep busy and really address the needs of the borough. I will, we are having a meeting scheduled tomorrow, so I will have a better report next council meeting. Thank you.
Excellent. Staff reports. Our clerk, our lovely clerk, Linda Servino.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everyone to file their financial disclosure statement.
Maybe we should have a pause in the meeting to just do that.
By April 30th, so that we're in compliance. They all went out as soon as I received them on April 1st or 2nd. And also I'll be on vacation next week and the following week, Tuesday through Friday, I will be attending the Municipal Practice Association Education Conference. So I'm looking forward to that.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay, so we have our chief of police, Mike Gillis.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The police department is busy working, starting a plan for the Memorial Day Parade, believe it or not. And then preliminary plans for July 4th, working with the Hall of the Observers. We've been seeing a lot of Crestwood Park issues. Just as a reminder, it's absolutely no swimming, even though there is water in the lake, is not treated. And there is no swimming. By, by the borough ordinances, specifically park hours and dog related codes, non- goose patrol dogs must be on leashes at all times and must remain clear of the beach and fields. Violators will be issued summonses.
I like that. DPW Supervisor Andy Agugliero.
Obviously, we all survived the earthquake and the eclipse.
Oh, yes.
Operation Crestwood Lake and Bull Hills opening are both in full swing. Despite all this ugly weather we've been having. Tomorrow, as long as the weather permits, we'll be putting the baseball bases in on field two. In between raindrops, we've been filling potholes. And today we dug out one of the catch basins in front of Crestwood Lake that was filled to the top. It stormed a great, so that's clear. DPW's had Simon rig there the past couple of days with students from Northern Highlands putting together pieces for the bureau, which look absolutely amazing. On the 28th, the Girl Scouts will be here at Borough Hall to do the Arbor Day planting. So that would be a very nice event. We're looking, DPW's looking for some summer part-time help. If anybody's interested, please let me know. And obviously, we're still on the lookout for a new mechanic. Other than that.
Busy time at the DPW in the spring. Like the crunch time, getting rent for Crestwood Lake.
Oh, and I would just like to wish the chief a happy early birthday.
Oh, happy birthday. Andy, I, I think I'd like to.
Oh, Andy.
To the high school, because there could be some seniors or kids that are in between college that, because they have that whole program where we're getting our interns, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I'm also happy to report that we had the season at first starting up.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. I'm just thinking that might be a good option. Yeah, we've talked about that.
Anybody's interested.
Yeah.
Yes.
Walter's like, Walter?
Walter, he's like, the ad list is on the, we're on the, they're all.
Yeah. So, County, Borough Attorney Ray West.
Thank you, Mayor. Very, very briefly, even though I was at the office the early part of this week, we hit the ground running this morning at seven o'clock with our sewer meeting, which was followed at nine o'clock with a meeting with Veolia, their council.
All fun stuff. He had a great start to his day.
It was, it was.
How many of you?
Too many. But, you know, both of the projects are moving forward, I think, pretty well. We've sort of developing game plan with respect to the sewers and Veolia. It looks like we're going to have at least the municipal police councilman Homan, a mini closing. The notion was to wait until all of the easements were done and conclude them at one time. But Veolia has consented to advancing and recording those easements that are already done. We also have an agenda for the ones that can be done in short order. We'll probably have to talk internally about how to best approach some of the residential property owners in terms of easements that are not of record. That'll require an internal discussion. We can get back to Veolia on that. But, but that's, I think, proceeding in good order. Met with the chief on some departmental matters that are ongoing. We have upcoming a settlement conference on our litigation with PK. I think the mayor's going to join on that one. That's on April 18th. If not, he'll get a designate. TJ's been working with Michael Vitola on store mortar management issues. And Andy probably should have brought it to that conversation if you're not, you know, already. And also working with the chief on multiple Oprah requests that the department has been getting hammered with. Tom has been working extensively on the cell tower that the, the mayor has referenced and also working with the mayor on the bureau project. That's what's happened.
Thank you very much. All right. I'll do my mayor's report very quickly. I had a mayor's meeting for the North, North Jersey League, New Jersey League municipalities. It was all about fair share housing, which has actually been at the across of all of the meetings to date this year. On March 20th, our governor signed a new legislation that dramatically modifies the state's affordable housing obligations. The numbers are going to be onerous and they pretty much know already that no one can meet the numbers. So in comes in the vacant land analysis and the overlay zones. And there's always, there's also going to be some requirements on our, our current overlay zones, which we will also have to meet in this round, which is, which is interesting because the reason that you have the overlay zone is because you don't have the space. But then they're going to actually then start making you use your prior overlay zones for, for the numbers this year. So it's, it's, it's confusing. It's onerous. But I have to say that out of, I feel sometimes really good when I go to these meetings because some of the towns are in big, big, big trouble. Actually, Council President O'Toole sent me an article this morning with Milburn.
Milburn.
Milburn just abdicated their responsibilities. So now the courts are telling them where, not only what they have to put, where they have to put it. So we've always been ahead of the curve. We've always done proper planning. You see on the consent agenda today, we're doing our hazard study and our master plan study. So one of the best things we can do is start planning now and get ahead of it and not, and, and, and just, you know, deal with it head on and just do whatever we can do. And that's exactly what we're doing. So more to come on that. I guess it's going to be one of the biggest topics, I think, in our town and all of New Jersey. So I'll probably be reporting on it every single time I have a meeting. Tomorrow, 2:10, West Crescent is moving along very well. You could, you could actually, inside of, you can see the rooms now, which is very interesting to see the size of them compared to what the actual plans are. So it's, it's really coming along. We have our OAC meeting tomorrow, which is the owner architect contractor meeting. So I will get another update, but it is looking great. Every time I go, there's, there's more and more done. So if anybody wants to have a look around, it's, it's pretty cool to see where everything's going to be. The budget, as you saw, we're going to. Um the budget, as you saw, uh we're going to, um after this, we're going to um uh introduce our budget. Um thank you to um Councilwoman Lovasolo and Councilwoman Holman and our CFO Allison Altano. We've been working on this budget. Um as we always do, it's a zero-based budget, it's um line by line, we um don't leave anything unturned. We've we go through many iterations, and um so we're introducing it now. And on May ninth, we will be adopting it, so on May ninth, we will have Paul Lurch here. He will go through the budget, you know, line by line and explain it to everybody, so it's an important meeting to attend. So we hope a lot of residents come um to ask questions and hear about the budget, but we are in very, very good shape through a lot of great planning, and um a lot of it also has to do with uh the fact that we have our rebals every year. So it makes uh the the tax pretty much um level and not so dramatic from year to year. Um so the mural project, as um Andy mentioned, it's it's going really well, all the schools have been involved, so it's really a special project. And uh there was a great article, if you haven't read it, that was in the records today, that um that really showed uh some of some of it, some of the uh progress that we've made so far. Still in in a big fundraising mode, so look out for some fundraising, there's a committee that's meeting uh next week. And that's it for me. Everybody else kind of mentioned everything else. So next, we have any unfinished business from anybody? Um new business, we have resolution twenty four dash one two two, introduction to the twenty twenty four municipal budget. Do I have a motion?
So move Lovasolo.
Second, please.
Holman. Councilman Deloizio.
Yes.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino.
Yes.
All right, next we have public comments on anything, anybody from the public want to speak about anything on the agenda? Or anything in general?
Another point, trying to understand the operation of everything. When when we put out the contract for work to be done, I understand it's a low bid, correct?
Correct.
Good question. Who's the, who is, who is the individual that determines the one selected?
So um the bids come in and they're opened, um and they're opened by our clerk, and we have an attorney there, I think, no, just a clerk. Um and she opens them, and then she goes through a checklist. And you and each one has to make sure there's certain things they have to have in, certain licenses, they have to have certain other.
Yeah, a lot of just full checklist.
Things.
The requirements.
Requirement. And then if everybody checks that off completely, then you look and see which one's the lowest, and then the lowest one wins. If some of them don't have all of the the checklist completed, they get they get thrown out, and then the second lowest one wins.
Good. The next question, with regard to two two twenty, the construction, I've been watching them all along. Is there an individual overseeing that whole operation?
So of course, there is a project manager on the side of D C C, the construction company, and we actually also have our own um project manager, Chuck Tatosian, who is watching it on our behalf.
Who who who's that?
His name is Chuck Tatosian. You're welcome. Anybody else have anything? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Have a good night, everybody.